Hello, this is the briefing meeting of the West Jordan City Planning Commission for August 6th, 2024, 6:30 PM. All Commissioners are present except Commissioner Allen. Let's take a quick look at the upcoming agenda. We have this briefing meeting till 6:00.
Testing, testing. It's coming through my computer. Everything's coming through my computer.
Go ahead Duncan.
We are ready for training. Hello. Hello.
Okay, hopefully my mic works a little better here.
It doesn't.
Can't hear me at all? Okay, what about now? Now you can hear me, great. So, training tonight, follow-up to last time. Larry's gonna put up my presentation from last time up on the screen. I think you've got paper copies in front of you as well. Or we'll just refer to the paper copies, okay. So, last time we talked especially about the first two pages with development agreements. The main takeaway from last time is that development agreements are a tool to fill in holes of regulations, right? So that if there is no city regulation on point to handle a certain matter, then a development agreement can be used to fill in that hole, right? We have, as an example, we talked about last time, we have special zones that need a development agreement. And that's mainly because some of our specialized non-Euclidean zones don't have every single lot and bulk standard spelled out. If you're in an R110 or an R18 subdivision, you can look at a chart and a table and it'll tell you exactly what your maximum building height is, your front and side setbacks. But in some of the special zones, we don't have that because it's intended that some of those types of things are gonna be filled in by the development agreement. There's also items that, for whatever reason, just because we can't anticipate every eventuality, we use a development agreement for, especially if the applicant asks for it, right? The main thing to remember with a development agreement is it's not unilateral, it's bilateral. So just like you wouldn't use pliers to pound in a nail, you'd use a hammer or a nail gun. You don't use a development agreement to quote "make somebody do something," right? That's not already a standard or regulation or in our city code. Or at least it's not pending, sometimes if it's pending, we can't. What you use a development agreement for is when both parties, the applicant and the city, agree that something isn't quite fully spelled out, either because we foresaw that, because we created the zone that way, or just for whatever reason, both parties agree, hey, we've got something we gotta work out, there's no regulation for, let's create one, let's agree on it, get it approved, and that's what's binding. So, that's kinda what a development agreement is, right? Another thing I wanna talk about, if you skip to page four in your handout, and it's the same handout as last time, we're gonna talk about zoning conditions, right? Zoning conditions, a lot of cities were using them up until, I don't know, especially up until 10 years ago, and then most cities realized that because of how the legislature had written the Land Use Development Management Act, looking at state statute and also court cases, that we were doing things, including in our city, that we really shouldn't do, right? And a zoning condition, there's a pretty good definition for it, you can read on your own in 13-5-6 in our city code. I just referenced or quoted the part at the end that says placing conditions on zoning map amendments is no longer permitted. In my view, at least from what I could see in the history, and I've only been at the city for eight years, but back when they were being created, and there's still a lot that exists, right? We haven't proliferated any new ones for a long, long time, but there's still ones that exist, that are holdovers, so to speak. And until we eliminate them or go through the processes to do something with them, they're there. And the main type of zoning condition we were using at the city in the past was as to uses. So, there might be, you know, 15 conditional uses and 20 permitted uses in a certain zone, and somebody wanted to rezone to that commercial zone, but we really didn't want a gas station or a car repair place. And so, when we granted the zone change, we said you can do all the conditional permitted uses in that zone except for these two, can't do these two. And it was done within the context of the zoning ordinance itself. It was not a separate document that both parties agreed to, it wasn't an MDA or whatever. And the problem with that is, is it became kinda cumbersome to keep track of probably, but the main reason from a legal perspective was we weren't treating everybody in the same zone the same way, right? One guy could literally be right next to the other guy in the same zone, and one guy could build the gas station and the other guy couldn't. Doesn't make a lot of sense if it's the same zone, right? Zoning conditions have also been used in the past for building heights, setbacks, all those kinds of things too. So one guy could build his building up to 25 feet and the other guy could do 40 just because we put a limitation on one or the other. We didn't do that, other cities maybe did. But basically some kinda, we did do that, okay, if I stand corrected, we did do that, Julie says. So, but nowadays, you know, that's a no-no, right? We know by current law, back then it wasn't spelled out probably specifically in state law. But the whole idea is, and if you see the site there from LUDMA, Land Use Development Management Act, Utah Code Section 109A505, that we should ensure that all the regulations are uniform for each class or kind of buildings throughout each zoning district. So, again, one guy if he can build the maximum 40 feet, but another guy we gave a limitation, only 25, obviously doesn't fit current state law, right? They should all be treated the same, it could all be 40 if that's the standard for that zone. So, that's just kinda something to keep in mind. Any questions on zoning conditions? And the main reason why you can't have them or shouldn't have them is they're unilateral, right? It's not both parties agreeing, and there's no agreement. It's just in the zoning ordinance, the zone change ordinance that got passed by the council. And so there was nothing negotiated for, right? It wasn't a two-way, what I would call a bilateral agreement. In fact, usually they weren't agreements at all. And in a sense, they were imposed last minute, is kinda the other issue, as you think about it. That typically, somebody has to, well, LUDMA also says very explicitly that you, when an applicant files their application, they are entitled, if they meet all of our requirements, they are entitled to build whatever fits those requirements, right? Lost my train of thought. So the idea is that, oh, and we can apply, on the other hand, in return for them being able to, they have to be granted their application if they meet all requirements. On the other hand, as a city, we can require all of those requirements that are currently in our code and standards, right? And we can point chapter and verse and say, sorry, Mr. Applicant, we can't approve your application because you haven't met Code Section such and such, or Public Improvement Standard such and such. And if we can point chapter and verse to an approved by the council standard, they have to follow it. Now they can change their application, fix it, and then we have to approve it if they comply with everything. But what we, and we can also, under the pending ordinance standard, as you know, if we have a change in the code that's in process, but we haven't completed it yet, we've had maybe a meeting on it, but it hasn't been formally approved by the council, maybe you've recommended it or talked about it, council hasn't approved it yet, we can apply up to 180 days, we can apply a standard that isn't quite approved yet, but it's on track to be approved. But what we can't do is make something up, right? And so in a sense, zoning conditions were things we were making up last minute. They were not already in our code, we weren't in the process of adopting them, we just made them up on the fly as something came in last minute, right? So that's really what the state legislature is telling us. And as you know, the way I laid out this handout as I go code section by code section, it's very well done. I can't say that for every part of the Utah code, but this part of the Utah code, very concise, very accurate, very easy to understand, a little bit redundant, but very internally consistent, right? Well done, easy to follow. And that's why I figured I'd just lay it all out and then put comments after each section or whatever to make it easy to understand. But one of the main principles the legislature has laid out is we cannot make stuff up after an application is filed that's not already pending or not already approved, right? And that's essentially what zoning conditions were. We, you know, yeah, we like the zone change, but we really don't want a gas station there. Well, if we didn't want a gas station in that zone, why did we put it as a permitted use on that chart, right? Maybe we shouldn't have put that there. So, the other thing that's related is exactions on the bottom of page four. And you've probably heard about it before, but it's two US Supreme Court cases, the Nolan and Dolan cases, they're called. And they're codified now in our state code under 109A508. But basically, there are some times when there is something that's needed for a development or an application and that could be imposed, but only if it meets these two criteria. And you can see them in bold on the bottom page four. We have to show that there's an essential link and that the exaction is roughly proportionate. I mean, and a perfect example is that somebody puts a full-size Walmart on a small 60-foot wide street, right? And anybody would know that there's an essential link there that the city needs to put traffic through, and it needs to be wider than just a 60-foot right-of-way, right? And, but the second part of the test is a little tougher, is you have to prove that the exaction is roughly proportionate, right? So, what does it need to be? Does it need to be 80 feet wide, 100 feet wide, 110 feet wide? And how much is their share? Is part of that the city's responsibility, is part of that the store's responsibility? I mean, another example was, and I may have mentioned this one in the past, but in another city I was in, up in Perry, we had a kind of a collector's street, and off to the side of it was this little rural lane that went off to the west. And literally, it was a rural lane, it was literally 18 to 20 feet of asphalt, no curb gutter, sidewalk, grass strips, nothing else. Which is perfectly fine, 'cause there are only four or five houses on each side of the road down a really long road, that's all you needed, right? And houses were built one at a time, it wasn't a subdivision. But then one day, a church came in and wanted to put a full-size church on that street, three congregations in it, there was gonna be a lot of traffic on Sunday, a lot of traffic on Wednesday nights. And it was about 200 feet or 250 feet away from this collector's street, and there was no way for people to safely walk from the church house to the collector's street. And so, city staff, I among them, we asked the church, we said, hey, how are you gonna get people, pedestrians and pedestrians mixed with cars, traffic, up and down, you know, from the collector's street to the church? 'Cause that's not gonna be safe having pedestrians and two-way traffic on a 18 to 20-foot wide piece of asphalt. And they of their own volition, because we told them there's plenty of options, maybe just road base with gravel on the top, that'll get people safely there, right? Because that was not their property, right? There was this intervening property. The church ultimately decided on its own with no arm twisting that they were just gonna put curb and gutter and sidewalk all the way to the street corner. And they were gonna even add the couple extra feet of asphalt to make it match. And that was probably not the least expensive or least intrusive way to handle it, there were plenty, but that's what they chose. And as long as we as a city didn't twist their arm, and that's what they chose, and it more than met the exaction test, right? If they would've pushed back and said, no, 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 we're gonna put six inches of road base and four inches of gravel, we probably would've had to said thank you and accept it, right? 'Cause that would've met the proportionality test. We proved there was an essential link, they needed to do something. That probably, in my view, would've been proportional to, but for them building the church, we wouldn't need anything, because they had the church there. We do need a place for safety for pedestrians. We got this, maybe, you know, five-foot-wide road base and gravel, totally good enough. They just chose to do more, right? So an applicant can always do more, but we just have to be careful as a city to not twist their arms and make them do more, right? So, and there's some other stuff there that you can read on your own. There's a recent Supreme Court case we can talk about another time. There's some best principles we can look at. I wanted to mainly spend some time, now that you have a little bit of understanding of development agreements, zoning conditions, exactions, I wanted to go to these two hypotheticals, unless you've got some questions first. Okay. So this, and 'cause I really think this is how you learn these principles, is you look at hypotheticals, 'cause a lot of these principles, until you kinda go through them and use them, they're not inherently easy to understand. But this first one, we got this applicant, he's got his four acres, he's in an MP manufacturing zone, he wants to go to an M1 manufacturing zone, you can do a few more uses. In fact, he wants to do this construction, sales and rental use. It's not allowed in the MP zone, but it is allowed in the M1, that's the one he wants to go to. City staff goes through and says, yeah, it meets the, you know how you guys always go as a planning commission? Staff does it too, and they build their staff report that way for you, there's those five criteria. When you give a positive recommendation to a city, to the city council, you have to find affirmatively all five of those criteria. If you have a negative determination on at least one of those five, you can give a negative recommendation to the council. So in this instance, in this hypothetical, city staff says, yep, looks to us like it. And they build the staff report that they send to you saying, looks like they meet all five criteria, and they meet all the requirements of the M1 zone itself. So they're recommending in their report that you recommend approval to the city council on this zone change. But because of the nature of the use, construction, sales and rental, staff is concerned about, maybe there needs to be a higher level of design standards, otherwise it may not stand out very well in that zone, especially with the current uses. And so, they would like to recommend a higher level of design standards and have the applicant enter into a development agreement, even though those design standards would be different from the M1 zone's current regulations. So the question for the day is then, could city staff or the planning commission legally require a development agreement in this situation? Okay. So more important than the no answer is the why, right? So why is that? What are some principles we've talked about as to why you could not require a development agreement? Okay, it's not required by the zone itself, uh-huh, unlike some of our specialty zones. That's a good, that's a good comment. What other reasons?
Already meets all the requirements of the M1, so we can't make it stricter.
Right, so there's no holes to fill, right? We're talking about an MDA fills holes where regulations don't exist. Here, all the regulations exist, there's no holes to fill, so that's another good comment. What else, if anything? Is it unilateral or bilateral here? Unilateral, the city's asking for it, is the applicant asking for it? No, so we don't wanna, development agreements by their very nature, agreements involve two or more parties, right? Here, there's only one party. And then what about the timing issue of the ordinances? Do we, does the fact pattern indicate that there's a pending ordinance? No, so there's no pending ordinance, no existing ordinance, no pending ordinance, so there's nothing for us to require that we can point chapter and verse to. And what about that principle in LUDMA that we were talking about? That 109A5, or the 109A505? The uniformity of buildings and uniformity of, what if we, does that violate that principle? One building looks a lot nicer, but we applied a different standard to buildings in the same zone, right? If it was a different zone, like it was still MP, that's okay, right? If we have one standard for the MP zone, one standard for buildings in the M1 zone, but now if they're both in the M1 zone, this guy plus his neighbor, and we're applying one standard to one, one to the other. Now, there's an exception to that rule. Uniform application to everybody from that date forward, right? So, if we changed the fact pattern and we just barely adopted a new updated code section and we're requiring better, higher-level design standards for everybody in the M1 zone, and then this guy files his application the next day after we approve it, or maybe it's a pending ordinance and we approve it, and he's gonna, are we okay then? Making him do the higher standard? Yeah, 'cause we're not making something up after the fact. We're applying it from something that occurred before. So, that's the one kinda nuance with uniform application we have to remember is it doesn't prevent us from updating our standards and applying them to applications that occur after that date, or the, you know, or pending on that date or whatever. We can still apply the new standard to all the applications after that date. So, all right, so then we get to go to this, you guys did great on the first one. Let's see how you do on here on the B hypothetical. So, this one, the applicant applies for a zone change, and he's just gonna go from R110 to R18, both Euclidean zones, right? Just going to smaller lots, fourth acre lots to fifth acre lots. And the concept plan for the proposed development indicates that if it's approved, he's probably gonna get an extra 25 houses, right? With the zone change, so he can build 125 maybe instead of 100. And early on during the staff review, it's recognized that there's a bridge that's really needed over this irrigation canal. Canal company will allow it, and it's gonna be needed in the opinion of city staff for adequate access and traffic. The problem is, we can't point chapter and verse to any specific regulations in city code in these other standards, the development standards or anywhere else. We can't point to a place that requires the bridge, right? But the applicant is willing to enter into a development agreement. We're not just twisting his arm, he really wants to do it. As long as he gets in return the zone change from the council. Of course, we can't make the council do anything, right? It's up to their discretion. So is a development agreement in this situation legal? If we entered into an agreement here, and if so, why? Or if not, why? You don't thi- Okay? Perfect. Yes, let's stop right there, those are the first two probably main points. It's a two-way agreement, it's bilateral. Really doesn't matter if the applicant thought of it first or we thought of it first, as long as we both truly agree and we're not twisting their arm, right? And that's what's happening here. And then they're, each party, like you're saying, is getting something. We call that in fancy Latin words quid pro quo, or basically just we each get something, right? Of value. Now, the thing that's hard about, I mean, so, we're, the city is getting the bridge, right? And what's the developer getting? Extra houses. And is it easy to calculate the cost of a bridge? You can do an engineering review of it and find out, maybe it costs 150,000 roughly, right? You've got a ballpark idea. Do we know the exact value of the additional houses, profit or whatever? That's a little harder to calculate, right? But could the parties agree that the value of the increased density or increased number of houses or lots has a value of at least 150,000, 150,000 or more? And if we put that in the agreement, is it more likely that nobody could successfully challenge it? If we put because this party wants this and this party wants that, and we agree that this has an approximate value of this and this value is that or more, and that's in the agreement and we sign it, what do you think if that goes to court? Can the applicant at that point say, oh, no, no, they tricked me, they twisted my arm, I didn't really mean that? What you thought?
I would say no, because it was an agreement, they both understood what was required before the agreement was signed.
Right, right, especially if we made it very specific like that, it's clear everybody got something of value in return for something else. And especially if the applicant got something of the same or higher value, right? We probably don't want it to go the other way for us, but if it's the same or higher value for them, it's usually a good thing. So those are two really good things. What else is a reason why this would be legal? What's good about it, what works here, according to the things we just talked about? I mean, those are really the main points, just in case you had something else, right? But we don't have any uniformity of application problems here. We're not, you know, if we assume that we're still, they're still gonna have to comply with all the requirements of the R18 zone, the same as anybody else that's in the R18 zone, once they start building in it. There's no other, there's no zoning conditions here, none of the other things we're talking about. There's no exactions really, right? Everything seems to be clean, so. All right, I think you guys are awesome. Any other questions? I know it's time for a regular meeting. Is this helpful? I just, 'cause sometimes, until you walk through an actual fact pattern or two, it's not immediately obvious, but clearly you understand the principles, so, thanks. Thank you. That's all I can have.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. That concludes our briefing meeting. I'm showing 5, 6 o'clock, just turn 6 o'clock on 1 o'clock. You okay, Julie, if we go ahead? All right. We will go ahead now and begin the Planning and Zone and Commission meeting for August 6th, 2024. All Commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is to review and approve the minutes from the July 16th meeting. Commissioner Allen.
I move that we approve the minutes from the July 16th, 2024 meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes from the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
I will second that.
Commission, or, motion has been made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item number two for public hearing is the Dry Creek Highlands amended subarea development plan one. Is there a representative here from the Ivory Development Group? Step to the microphones, please.
Um, I'm Ross Dinsdale. Thanks for your time tonight. Uh, you guys are lucky, um, I've actually been through quite a few of these trainings. I previously worked for Lehigh City as a development engineer. Um, so I gotta work on a lot of development agreements then, and I still do now, so. Um, it's, it's nice to work with West Jordan. You guys have a knowledgeable staff, it makes it really easy to, um, work with you guys, so, anyway, happy to be here. I don't know, do you have any questions for me, or should we go through?
We'd like you to give us an overview of your, your application and proposal.
Okay, um, really two main, two main questions. Uh, we, um, are resubmitting the subarea plan one for approval. Uh, we submitted our preliminary plan, and as we, uh, went through it with staff, realized that some of the preliminary didn't match the subarea. And then as we, uh, went through the subarea, uh, based on some of the comments from staff, we made, uh, changes to the subarea plan. Um, some of the big ones were, there were quite a few, um, private streets in the previous plan. Uh, engineering had concerns with public utilities and private streets, uh, which is understandable. And, and so this plan has changed, um, so that quite a few of those, well, the majority of the streets now are all public streets, all of the single-family homes from, on public streets. And, um, then we have a handful of townhomes that still have private alleyways in the back, but the majority of them will be served by public utilities out in the public street. Um, and just made some other changes based on comments from staff. Um, the, the other amendment we're asking for is the current plan, um, I guess our development agreement. The two triggers are a swimming pool at two hundred units and a clubhouse at three hundred units, or sorry, four hundred units. Um, as we began to design the clubhouse along with the swimming pool, we found that they really need to be built together. And, uh, because of the size of it, it's a fairly long process to build. And so, um, working with staff, what, what we asked is if we could delay the building of the pool, but in exchange, you know, we would move up the construction of the clubhouse, so that they'd be constructed together. So, um, what we're asking is that they, uh, we change that trigger to three hundred units. And then we would build them both at the same time. These are some renderings, we've had our architect working on it, it's actually gonna be really cool. Um, you know, if you go out there on site, which if you haven't had a chance, you should go out there, um, ninety to south is, uh, will be paved next week, so you'll be able to actually, you know, if you wanna walk or drive out on it, can do that. Um, it won't be officially open, but, um, you know, you could go check it out if you want. But the views up on this side of the valley are pretty cool. You get a, a really nice view of the mountains on the east side of the valley because of how high it is. Anyway, we're pretty excited about the clubhouse, think it's gonna have really cool views. Um, and then this is a concept of how that whole area potentially lays out. This isn't set in stone yet, but just so you guys have an idea of, of what, um, you know, that may look like. But one of the things we're looking at is most likely we'll put that clubhouse down closer to the corner, uh, just because as you come into the community, you'll get a better chance to see it as kind of a focal point, center gathering place, so. Um, yeah, that's really it, I, you guys have any questions?
Questions for Mr. Dinsdale? I see none right now, so we'll excuse you, but call you back up if we have questions here in a minute.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Forsythe?
All right, thank you. Um, so, uh, just to kind of reiterate, uh, the two items that we're looking at tonight. Um, first, uh, one's being the amended subarea one plan. Um, so thanks to Ross for going over that a little bit. And then the second one, uh, as he kind of explained already, was, uh, just amending that one sentence in the master development agreement, um, changing the certificate of occupancy triggers from two hundred and four hundred to three hundred. So just to give a little bit of history on, um, Jones Ranch, just for the commissioners that, uh, aren't familiar with it. Uh, so this is a master plan community out on the west side, um, kind of, uh, developing both sides of highway U one eleven between eighty-six hundred south and nine hundred south. So, uh, it's about just under six hundred acres, um, proposing about two, uh, maximum of two thousand nine hundred and sixty units. And these are kind of a mix of both low, um, medium and high density, uh, single-family and multifamily residential. So basically, it's a mix of small, medium and large, uh, single-family lots, um, and townhomes, so. Uh, so the, kind of the idea was to really kind of mix these, um, uh, housing types throughout the development, just to provide some flexibility and, uh, get kind of a nice mix through there. And then, uh, in addition to the homes, they're also providing a good amount of open space. The club ivory amenity was the, uh, pool and clubhouse that Ross was talking about. Um, that's kind of the biggest amenity. And then the, um, passive open space, you can see there, that's the Barney's Creek Wash. There'll be a, uh, multi-use trail running through there, uh, not just underneath the roads, but under the highway as well. So that's just kind of the basics. So the subarea is really just looking at, um, uh, well, let me back up. The master plan is kind of the overall, um, high-level plan for the area, and then the subareas kind of get it a little bit more into the details. So, um, this subarea one is kind of down there in the southeast corner of, um, of this plan. So I'll just, uh, really quick, go over just kind of some noteworthy items, um, just some of the details. Uh, some of the things that are being left out of this plan, um, are the Barney's Creek Wash. Um, that's not gonna be included in subarea one, but that will be included in subarea two at a later date. So that'll actually be coming back to, to the planning commission and the council for, for consideration, so. And then the other item, uh, kind of in a similar manner, um, Albright Peak Road, that's, you can kind of see that section there in the pink. That's a stub that's supposed to continue across the wash. Right now, it's just a stub that ends there at the wash. Um, so that's gonna be coming back, uh, again in subarea two. So they'll be extending that road as part of that subarea rather than this subarea one. And then lastly, uh, just the walls and fencing, this is just one of the items that the planning commission, um, needs to kind of look at and sign off on. But, uh, uh, the walls they're proposing there, the materials, the dimensions, uh, all of that's meeting our city code as far as, uh, columns go, caps, uh, spacing between the columns, so, uh, we feel they're doing a good job there. So that's, uh, pretty much it. Um, so staff's recommending, uh, positive recommendation and, uh, yeah, positive recommendation for both these items, and I can answer any questions, may I?
Commissioner Allen?
That was really good summary, Mark. Uh, just more of a, a general question. Uh, could you summarize why and when amenities are required? Like, uh, why do we require them? And when, what are the triggers to say, okay, this amenity needs to happen at this point, this, this point? Just very high level.
Yeah, so, uh, those amenities are outlined in the city code under the plan community ordinance. Um, so a lot of those are kind of performance-based, so, um, basically you can get more density by providing more amenities. That's, that's kind of the general gist of it. But, um, in this specific one, the, there is only just the one trigger, which was the clubhouse and the pool, and that was linked to the certificate of occupancies. So, um, the other things like the, the trail, um, some of the parks you saw on the west side, those are a little bit more subject to, um, ivory's timing and how they decide to do that.
And so with the committee, I know somebody over there knew, and, and I was talking to Scott earlier about, uh, Jones Ranch or Dry Creek Highlands or Wood Ranch. Would it be useful in the future if maybe it brought a presentation why the amenities were arrived at the way they were in the master development plan? Because that's been a few years ago. If that's something the commission would like, because I, there's gonna be several, it's just like Wood Ranch, you're gonna be seeing this over and over again. And I want to, I think, uh, out of due respect for all of the planning commissioners, I think it's good that you have a firm understanding. It was already been approved, so if the commission would like to me to do that in a pre-meeting or something, I'd be happy to do it, so.
My personal feeling is that, uh, we don't need that, because it will all sort of come out as we revisit this issue time after time in the future. It'll be before us a lot, many more times, but other commissioners, please weigh in. Commissioner Roberts?
So I have a question with regard to moving this, uh, this trigger, which is, I know that this subdivision already has somewhere in the ballpark of thirty to fifty houses that are complete with, uh, certificate of occupancies. Is there any sort of liability or any sort of issue with changing what a promise that they can rely on or that they previously could rely on in this way? We're basically, or effectively moving the pool back by a hundred houses, which some of them may have been banking on coming sooner, if that makes sense.
I, I don't think any of the amenities have been taken away, it's just the trigger point. And so all the developers asking, rather than build a swimming pool without a clubhouse, they would like to condense everything down to three hundred units and build them both together, so they'll still be built, you know? And instead of two hundred houses with a swimming pool out in the middle of nowhere, now they'll have a clubhouse to go with it, and so. So I don't think there's any liability, I'm not an attorney, Duncan is, so he can, you know?
Yeah, unless they've, the developers created some separate contractual relationship with the homeowners as they come in, the MDA is between the, the city and the developer, and hence the reason for an amendment to the development agreement, because if we agree upon it, then it's, it's legal, you know, between the, the parties. As Larry indicated, it's, that's still gonna happen, there's not a, even a bait and switch to the argument that somebody could make it. In fact, the overall amenity is, is coming quicker, right? Um, and that is the only thing really of substance in the amendment, the proposed amendment to the development agreement is just changing these triggers from two hundred and four hundred to three hundred overall, so. Great question, we always ought to ask questions like that. In this instance, no, legally, I don't see any issue there.
Thank you both for that explanation.
Are there any more questions for the applicant or staff? Commissioner Hatch?
Uh, Larry, just in response to you with the master development agreements, I think it would be helpful for me just to have that. Um, I don't know if we can do a class for those, remedial class for those of us who don't remember all the details, but it would be helpful for me just to refresh my memory, it's been a few years. Okay.
If somebody's ready to make a motion, there are two motions that need to be made. See, I'm sorry, I, I almost forget that part. We will now proceed to public hearing. Uh, there's, I don't see anybody here in the audience that, uh, would comment, so is there anybody on phone or by Zoom that wishes to comment?
There's nobody online.
Julie informs us there's nobody on the phone or by Zoom, so we will consider public hearing closed. So anybody who cares to make a motion? Somebody? Commissioner Hollingsworth?
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report, and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I moved that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council concerning the amended Dry Creek Highlands subarea one development plan consisting of four hundred and four lots on eighty-nine acres in a P dash C zone.
Commissioner Roberts?
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Roberts?
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report, and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I moved that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council concerning the amended Jones Ranch master development agreement.
Mr. Hollingsworth?
I second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Dinsdale. We will now proceed to item number three on the agenda, text amendments. I assume that Larry will be addressing these.
It's actually gonna be me, sorry to disappoint.
Go for it, Taylor.
Um, these are, uh, title fourteen and fifteen code amendments, these are being proposed by us as the city, and really the reason is to comply with a new state law, House Bill four seventy-six. So among the provisions of House Bill four seventy-six, where, uh, we can't require subdivision improvement plans, um, those like the construction drawings at both preliminary and final subdivisions, uh, it also sets timelines for when our reviews need to be complete and limits the total number of views that the municipality, uh, may conduct. So the overview of the changes are to bring us into compliance with those, uh, uh, changes to House Bill, or, uh, state ordinance, and we also modernize, uh, some of our subdivision processes. Um, we don't review anything on paper anymore, but we are still requiring like nine sets of paper plans. So we're going ahead and getting rid of all of those and just requiring things electronically to move into the early two thousands. Um, so with that, happy to answer any questions you have, but we are obviously recommending a positive recommendation tonight.
Commissioner Hatch?
I would like to know what problem these amendments fix? Like what, what is, what was the issue? Why did the legislature decide to make these amendments? What, what's the impetus?
Yeah, uh, I think it hasn't been a problem necessarily in West Jordan, but there are examples of cities, uh, which getting development through could be almost impossible. You'd do a full review, the engineers would make all the changes and bring it back in, and they'd get new comments that they'd never seen before, that didn't relate to any of the changes that they made. And so cities just weren't giving them full comments, and they were dragging the development process out six, seven, eight, nine reviews. And so this is really in response to a couple bad actors that weren't processing their plans, and so the-
Go ahead, name those cities.
I don't know them off the top of my head.
No, I'm just kidding.
And so rather than address those cities, they just do a shotgun and blast, all the cities need to update.
And to add to what Taylor just said, that as he mentioned, it's titles fourteen and fifteen. Title fourteen is the subdivision title, right? Fifteen is our standard development processes title, that the legislature was focused not on development in general, but specifically subdivisions, right?
Residential subdivisions.
Yeah, for residential, right, thank you. It's residential subdivisions, which is a very specific type of development. Um, and largely, right, just already, uh, entitled, right? So already, somebody already has the R one eight zone or R one ten zone, and all they wanna do is come in, use our existing standards, like we were talking about earlier, and just build the residential subdivision according to our existing standards. No development agreement needed, just wanna work towards a subdivision. Um, and I think they were, uh, the bad actors were the bad actors in that area, right? Residential subdivisions, simple, ready to go. And the theory was you should be able to get through one of those processes in a few months, and not, in some of these instances, some cities were maybe requiring a year or more or whatever, just, and I think that's what caught the legislature's attention. And then they got more focused on too, not having too expensive engineering, keeping engineering at one part of the process or the other. And here we chose doing the engineering at the end of the process, let somebody do the basic planning at the beginning part. Um, anyway, that's just my two cents.
Anyway, that's just my two cents.
So not to belabor the point, what this, what this new legislation, which goes live and active November 1st, by the way, what this will mean to the planning commission is that in the past, we did some of the, with the preliminary subdivision plats that come to the commission for review, you had, you know, some basic engineering. And the way that this new legislation has forced, forced us to take action is that a lot of the detailed engineering is going to take place at the final subdivision plat. We get four reviews. Cities will have four reviews. If we don't get things right and corrected by that fourth review, it's automatically approved. So we've got to draw a very firm, bright line when we receive red lines back and forth and corrections. But, so what that means to the commission is that you may not get as much detail as you're accustomed to. Now, we're going to work with the attorney's office and craft, we'll call it a general condition of approval with these preliminary plats. If we get into the final details in the engineering and it doesn't match up, doesn't, doesn't, it can't, we can't engineer it per our standards, then we'll likely remand it back to the commission. That's where our hand has been forced that way, so.
I get our legislature as a lot of developers, but this really seems counterproductive to me. And I'm just a regular person. It doesn't, it feels like it's putting the onus on the city to get it right, and the developer gets what they want regardless of how the city interacts or what they do. And I get cities can slow things down, NIMBYism, whatever it is, but I think cities do that for a reason, because they're in charge of their city and they want to make sure it's developed properly. This just feels backwards to me. It feels like it should be the other way around, just my own personal opinion.
I actually have to agree with that. I don't think that there's a benefit to the city to slow rolling in development. So the only, you know, the only real motive that I see there, even in the case of the bad actors, is trying to get it right for their constituents.
Your points are well taken. Nevertheless, there is a state law that we probably should comply with. This item is noted for public hearing. Oh, Taylor has something to say. This item's noted for public hearing, so public hearing is now open. There's nobody here that wishes to speak on this. Is there anybody online or Zoom?
There's no one online.
Thank you, Julie. Public hearing is now closed. Commissioner Allen?
I move that the planning commission recommend approval, positive recommendation of the Title 14 and 15 Development Code amendment to the West Jordan City Council as presented in this staff report.
Commissioner Thomas?
I'll go ahead and second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? One opposed.
I'm opposed.
Commissioner Hatch is opposed. On the principle. So noted. That concludes our agenda, except for the last item, which is, Commissioner Thomas?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned.